404 and first department budget presentation is Chief Steve Mathman.
Geraldine, he's the clicker. Make sure it's on Steve.
I'm sure it isn't. It is. You know, I have to figure out how to run it every time. I turned it off, right?
Did you go the wrong way?
Nope.
You gotta go to the right. The arrow to the right. There you go.
All right, this is, this is our, our review or part of budget, I guess you'd call it, Community Development Department. And this is, this is the breakdown of the apartment. It looks a little different than it did before. You'll see the director, you'll see Assistant Director of Community Development. And that's a position, we've been working on succession for different jobs to, for people to fill in when, when people get gone. And we fill that job with the, with an Assistant Director of Community Development, which will be Latora Anderson. Y'all all know her. She's worked for us for a while. She's contracted, she'll be coming back to work for us full-time. And at some point she'll take my place, hopefully. I, I do have to retire at some point, you know, I'll be seventy-one in July, I'm gonna, gonna have to retire sooner or later. So, the whole idea is she already knows planning and zoning. She knows how we work. It's just getting used to other departments, which we'll have time to do that at some point. I've been gonna retire since I was fifty though, so we'll see how that goes. But, and then it breaks on down, we have a building official code enforcement manager, Jeremy Smith, and he kinda runs the other departments, which are your permitting technicians, we have two. We also have a position that is a permitting coordinator. And currently that job is open right now. We, we just haven't, we haven't tried to fill it at this point, and don't know that, don't know that we will right now. We have, we have three code officer positions. There's two actual code officers, one who is a property maintenance specialist. We have one, we have one code enforcement officer position open at this time, we're trying to hire, but we're having difficulty finding one. But, as I think everybody is, we currently have two building inspectors, one, one that works the city, and then we have one building inspector that's stationed at L3. And most of y'all probably know that, but the one at L3, we, we put that position out there, it's been three or four years ago, maybe longer. And the reason for that was permits that come into my office are open record. Obviously, some of the things they do at L3, we don't really want that out there. So, we put a, we put an inspector out there who also does planning reviews and all that, at L3 itself. So, those aren't public records. So, we kinda separate that too. If we do get jammed up, he can come in the city and inspect for us. But generally speaking, he stays at L3. And then we have a sanitaryian who takes care of our restaurants and swimming pool. I'm sure y'all have all heard about her. She does, she does a bang-up job. She's pretty tough. We also have a lot of abatement superintendent, and four crew members, and those guys are the ones that mow the lots and do the cleanups that you see around town that code enforcement generates. We just got through cleaning up under the, under the overpass, which is becoming a too regular of a thing. But, those guys do a good job too. They used to be part-time, worked twenty-eight hours a week. And council, I think a year or two ago, let us put all those guys full-time. And it's been a, it's been a blessing to us. We're able to clean up a lot of stuff in the winter when those guys didn't work before. So, that's worked out real well. And then GIS, we have a GIS analyst that actually works out of my office too, which he, he helps everybody else. But that's a, he does a great job. We stole him from Juice a couple of years ago. So, we don't wanna let him go. Basically, the community development, the planning department, this is, this is what they consist of. We do the planning, building permitting, inspections, code enforcement, public health, abatement, sanitation, and GIS. And this is kinda a breakdown from last year to this year. Actually cut my budget last year. Anybody remember that? Cut the budget last year. I actually could've cut it this year. It is higher this year. And that, that of course is for the Assistant Community Development Director that we'll be hiring and putting on. But, we, we still managed to cut part of the budget to get to that place. Me and this thing do not get along. Okay, for the planning part of it, we process and develop permit applications, provide land use and code information, administer pre-application meetings with developers. And I always like to talk about this, but every Thursday morning, new, new projects that are coming in, whether they be commercials, subdivisions, whatever they are, we set up meetings with these guys. And in, in those meetings are the city planner, myself, city engineer, building official, fire marshal, and Juice representative, so that we can talk about their projects and kinda lead them the direction we want it to go when we build these things. So that by the time they get to a building permit application, we've already worked through all the, all the hot messes we need to. We also maintain the comprehensive plan and prepare long-range planning documents. We ensure capital programs, zoning and other activities in the city are consistent with the goals and policies of the city's planning regulation. And we focus on preserving the unique character of the city through maintenance of its planning documents and careful review of development and permit applications. And this is just an example of plaits. At one time, we were, we were doing over a hundred plaits a year when, when we first started the infill housing. First that slowed down a little bit, and you can kinda see that. That's just kinda where we were, twenty-three, twenty-four, and where we're at today. To date, we've done forty-three plaits, three zoning applications, and two conditional use permits. Zoning, zoning applications over the last couple of years have really slowed down. We've tended, most, most of the thing coming in now is going to the places that are already zoned for them, or they're residential type deals. So, we're not seeing as many of those as we used to. And then on the building permitting side, the purpose of the building division is protect, help, safety, and welfare of the public, and the durability of the built environment through the permitting and inspection process. The building division reviews construction plans for compliance. And that's not just reviewed by building, it's reviewed by city engineer, from a zoning aspect, from the fire marshals. There's quite a bit goes into just the reviews. And then inspections are completed throughout construction phase of the project to ensure they're built in accordance with approved plans and all, all the codes that are in place. And this is, this is where we are today. Last year, we did one thousand three hundred and thirty-seven permits for almost one point seven million dollars in fees. This year, to date, you can tell we're gonna, we're gonna wear last year out. We've done twelve hundred and eighty-two, and we're already a little over two point four million that we've taken in. And that's just permit fees themselves. So, used to, community development department did not pay for itself. And with all this building, we actually, actually paid for ourselves, which is, that's pretty cool. A lot of, a lot of places can't say that. This is kind of a little bit of a breakdown of the impact fees we've taken in through the years. If you look down at the bottom chart, it kinda breaks it down into certain roadway impact fees. There's three different, three different areas in the city where that money goes. And then of course, water impact fees, and wastewater impact fees. The, the impact fees for roadways, those monies taken in for those particular areas, one, two, three, has to be spent in that area. And that's roadway, drainage, stuff like that. The wastewater and water, that money can be spent in any of the districts. That's why you don't see it separated out like that. But, and that, that figure is actually not where, that's not the correct figure for during our, during our changeover from my gov to the new software package we have, intergov, we're, we still haven't been able to pull all the data out there yet. So that, that, those figures you're looking at for this year are probably a million, one point five more than what you're seeing there. So, and that's money we actually get to use on the city's infrastructure, that's paid for by developers and builders. They don't love it either, I can tell you. But, it helps a lot, it really does. This is inspections. We did twenty-three, twenty-four, ninety-two, oh-one. This year already, we're at eighty-nine, eighty-two. And, and, and I'm sure y'all, what, what's the big increase? It's because of the apartment complexes that we have going. They require a lot more inspections than normal house. We do four, five different inspections. On these, we're in there every, almost every day. So that's, that's what the, that's where that number's coming from. I have no idea where it'll look like by the time we get to October, but it's gonna be on up there, 'cause we're just now getting to the busy time of year. Code enforcement ensures compliance with city regulations that enclose resolving code violations, public outrage, working with the community on various issues. It work, they work closely with us and the building division. A lot of times, they help us take care of things that we don't, we don't have time to, or we can't get to. And a lot of times, they find things that we need to, from the other end, need to look at. And they assist upholding, you know, planning and building permit conditions. I stated that we have two regular code enforcement officers. Those regular code enforcement officers do things like high grass, weeds, junk vehicles, things of that nature. Property maintenance specialist tends to more be involved in actual homes or apartments that have complaints and all that. And you can see our complaints are way up. You also see we're already, we're already exceeding the code cases we had last year already this year. So, we need to get that other one in line to be able to handle it. But, it's a very busy office. All right, it's dry. Somebody change that for me. So, on the property maintenance, we continue to address downtown property maintenance. We continue to address property owners about residential property maintenance as well as substandard properties. And we worked that pretty hard. That used to kinda fall to the back burner because of grass and weeds. But have that property maintenance specialist, we're better able to take care of that. City planner, which comes under planning, rewriting the zoning ordinance and the downtown, downtown comprehensive plan, which I think the comprehensive plan is done. We just haven't, it's, we just haven't pulled the trigger on it. As far as rewriting the zoning ordinance, we are working on that. We've already done several chapters. And now at our P and Z meetings every month, and we'll see one in June, we're, we're bringing those up. So at some point, hopefully before Christmas, we're bringing you guys a new zoning ordinance. It's way outdated, and try to get that thing where it needs to be. The, the new permitting software, we transitioned over to Tyler Technologies intergov. And it's been a challenge for us to learn that. They did a much better selling job of it than how it actually works. We found that the hard way. We thought we were gonna be able to transition all of our, all of our information we had on the O, and it didn't pan out. So we had to come up with another scheme to get that. And that's, that's been a challenge for us to even get these numbers where they make sense. But we're working on it, we're getting it there. When, when it's all up and running, it's gonna help us. It'll get us online where we wasn't before. And that's all I got. Ben Franklin said, "Without continual growth and progress, such words as improvement, achievement, excess have no meaning." Got any questions? Ramon's gotta have one.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Police Department, Chief Smith.
All right. Good afternoon. This is our twenty-five, twenty-six budget presentation for the Greenville Police Department. First slide, this is our mission statement, our core values that we instituted last year that we try to strive by and serve our public with at all times. This is a current organizational chart of the Police Department as it is now. It's broken down into four different divisions, the criminal investigation division, the patrol division, support services division, operations support. Criminal investigations, obviously, that's the detectives. Patrol is the patrol officer. Support services, that's where majority of our civilian employees are, with dispatch, property room, records. And then operations support is responsible for all our programs. And we've also added the mental health unit this year and the traffic unit with them. Our four areas of focus to complete that mission is professionalism, you know, conducting oneself responsibility, integrity, accountability, and excellence, community engagement, working with and through groups of people, our police response, and our proactive enforcement. Professionalism. The Greenville Police Department is an accredited police agency. There are, there's closer to three thousand police departments now in the state of Texas with a lot of ISD starting police departments. And only about a hundred ninety-seven of them have ever achieved accreditation. That's not to say that a hundred ninety-seven have accreditation, that's achieved it, some of them let it go. And of that, the Greenville Police Department, we're one of only seven percent of all Texas agencies that are accredited and follow Texas best practices. And then we do proactive in-service training routinely. And then we make sure that our officers are appropriately equipped for all assignments. Our community engagement, we have volunteer programs, youth and adult programs, citizen training classes, and then we do our big summer of safety kids camp. We also do Officer David Dixon Fishing Friday, right at the beginning of summer. Towards the end of summer, we do a popsicle patrol, where we drive around and hand out popsicles and water to people that are shopping, getting ready for back to school. Hundreds education courses, we usually put on three or four of those a year. We do our national night out every year. We do a Blue Santa photo event at the Police Department. We also have citizen and teen police academies. And then we also do rape, aggression, and defense classes. Our police response, this is where all our calls for service are, dealing with mental health situations, calls for service for traffic crashes, answering alarms, and conducting criminal investigations. We still have a four district system. Nowadays though, we usually have more than one officer in a district or two. We've increased our minimum staffing at the most busiest times of the day now. So, over the past year, we answered thirty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-five calls for service, which is up four point seven seven percent from the previous year. We've made one thousand and sixty arrests, which is up two point four one percent. And we worked one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven traffic clashes, which is up four point one seven percent from last year. Our response times, as we put more officers on the street, we can spread out a little bit better. We managed to get our response times down just a little bit more over the last year. Two years ago, we were at four minutes and fifty-seven seconds for all priority one responses. And this last year, we were down to four minutes and thirty-nine seconds. And then priority two calls also went down by about forty seconds. Traffic enforcement, we made ten thousand four hundred and sixty-eight traffic stops, which is up fifteen point seven four percent from last year. We're still conducting narcotics enforcement, DWI enforcement, doing close watches on businesses and residences, and still conducting neighborhood patrols. Our accomplishments over the last year, thanks to council last year, we received four new police officers and a new police sergeant position. We completed our radio infrastructure installation, so our new radio system is up and running. And it's very robust. It's turned out to be very, very handy. Couple of months ago, Wood County Sheriff's Office lost an officer in the line of duty, and we sent officers down there to help them. And Captain Starnes was able to program our radios to their frequency. So when we went down there to help them, we actually could communicate with their dispatch system. And he did that in an afternoon. It was very quick. And that just shows how robust that our system is. And that just shows how robust that our system is. We also implemented our mental health unit, and we partially instituted a traffic unit. We have a sergeant and officer in there right now that you'll see every day out there doing, conducting traffic stops. We successfully implemented our summer of safety program. We did three rape progression defense classes last year. And we also hired and recruited 11 new employees, including nine police officers and two civilians. We had one promotion last year, which was Officer Freddie Guante was promoted to sergeant. And then we lost Officer Dawson. So we went through kind of a dark time at the end of the last year. And that, that took us all by surprise. So we're trying to get adjusted to our new normal now. So our budget request for the 25, 26 fiscal year. Personnel wise, we're asking for two additional patrol officers and one support services lieutenant. Nowadays, with technology, we're trying to implement more technology instead of just throwing bodies at a problem, try to see if we can't use technology to help that. And we're asking for a support services lieutenant to help integrate all our systems, to make sure that they talk to each other so we don't end up with one system that does one thing and another system does the other thing and they don't speak to each other. And we also need somebody that's, can really take over the radio system because radios aren't just radios anymore, they're mini computers. So we're asking for a support services lieutenant. This kind of goes along with our staffing plan that we've had in place. 2026 was to add two officers, we're asking for two officers, and that's our support services Request, the first one, our Spillman and Records Management System, that's, that's something that we just have to do. We don't have a choice. Our current contract expires this year. It was a 12-year contract with Spillman expires, so we've gotta come up with a new CAD system. And we're gonna stick with Spillman after going through everything. But it's up for renewal and we have to get something because it's our entire records management system, it's our dispatch system, it's everything. So we have to have some sort of records management. And the new virtual environment kind of goes in hand in hand with that. So that's just the cost that we just, we can't just say, no, we don't need that this year. We're also asking for Axon Taser 10 replacement program. Our current Tasers are no longer supported by the company. So we can't get replacements for them and that sort of thing, so we have to go to a new taser platform. They do a lease, lease program like they do the body cams. And the Taser 10 is their newest version, so it won't go out of service for quite some time, so hopefully we won't have to change platforms for a while. And then also, we're asking for a traffic safety radar, the sign trailer. It's a larger trailer than the one we currently have that's old and, and at the end of its useful lifespan. It'll have a message board that we can display for events or for issues. For instance, the Traders Road, Roy Warren, we could have a bigger trailer out there with a bigger sign. And then also, our crisis negotiators, if we're in a hostage situation, our current phone system is a wired system that's old and outdated, that was put together by, I think, a mom and pop in their basement. So we're looking at replacing those that if we ever have the need to negotiate with someone that's barricaded themselves inside of a, of a house, we can use technology to get it in there and speak back and forth. So those are our capital requests for the year. Our current budget is $13,652,950. Thirteen, thirteen million, six hundred, yeah. Oh, wow. We're working. Nope. Believe that, misspoke, misspoke, yeah. Thirteen million, 652,952 dollars, and the majority of it is personnel. Our proposed budget for next year does go up to 14,705,676 dollars. And the increase is personnel mainly. We've managed to reduce our operating costs this coming year, so it was down. So basically, it'd be a budget increase of 1,524,000. Questions, comments, concerns?
Chief, on that Spillman contract, how long, is that for another 12 years?
They have a five-year option and a senior option after getting with everyone. Our radio is through Motorola, Motorola owns Spillman. Our radio contract's good for 10 years, so we're asking for the contract for the Spillman to go for 10 years to run, to coincide with the radio system, since they're both from the same company and tying together. So plus, it saves the city money by going that far out at the same price every year. Thank y'all very much. And now that the scene's secure, here comes fire.
My God. This guy. Every time. Good evening, council. Appreciate the opportunity tonight. I do gotta click it? Oh, okay. There, there you go. Sweet. All right. Once again, we appreciate the opportunity. Encourage everybody to, please ask questions if you have them. I know I may not answer them all through the presentation, so feel free to ask as we go This is just a quick overview of our organizational chart. The biggest difference between last year is that we added one administrative assistant and three firefighters. By adding the three firefighters now, we have a, our ladder truck in the city is a four-man minimum. So we don't have complete four-man minimums necessarily, but our ladder truck will always have four, four people on it. That was the biggest accomplishment there from last year. And then most of you know that we've got Sylvia Rodriguez. She is now fully dedicated to being our community risk reduction specialist and not having to split duties as that in our administrative assistant. Excited about that. Came out kind of weird. That's all right. So these are just some of the services that we provide. They're all the same that they've been in the past, but we'll go through them one more time. Obviously, fire suppression is something we do, and that's obviously in the name. But as we move further and further down the line each year, you know, the fire suppression is one of the least things that we do. We have fewer and fewer fires. And that's a good thing, you know? I think that's, that's a direct result of technology and educating, educating the public. But that's, you know, one of the primary things we do. Fire and arson investigation is something we do. So anytime there's a fire in the city, we are obligated to investigate that fire. And it really doesn't matter, you know, how big the fire is, but we take a look at all of them. Sometimes they're, they're done at the company level with our captains, but we have two people in our office that, that is their primary job if it has to escalate to them. So another one is fire inspections and code enforcement. Like Steve said earlier, we, we're responsible for our own side of the inspections and code enforcement and work very close with that group as well to make that happen. Without them, you know, our job, our job would be that much tougher and I feel, you know, the same for them. I think we do a great job of working together as a team there. Part of the biggest thing that we do is emergency medical, emergency medical first response. We do get a subsidy from the hospital district. It's about $28,000 a year to provide first response for our citizens. That, that's a, that goes a little ways to, to provide that service, but really, it probably just pays for our fuel. You know, we pick up a lot of that responsibility ourselves to finish that out. But I'll say this, and it's something that I, I believe it's a basic service that we should provide. You know, I don't think we should ever not provide that service. We run in conjunction with AMR. We don't, about the only thing we don't do is transport. So that makes up, as you'll see later, a big, a big part of our calls. But I think if we weren't there to provide that service, then, you know, I think the community would, would be lacking as far as the need. We also do technical rescue response. So when I say technical rescue, what I'm talking about is high angle rescue, rope rescue, confined space rescue, trench rescue. We're out here on an island, if you will, you know, the city of Greenville is, we're not necessarily in the metroplex. We're on the very edge of the cog. And if you're in the metroplex, you can kind of rely on other cities around you to help you provide some of those, those services. And so it's important for us to have our, our hand in each of those services so that if some, something happens within the city, we, we can have a certain level of response. It is tough to be completely competent in all those, just with the limited resources that we have, but I feel like we do a great job of, of doing the best that we can with what we have. And we're always striving each year to do even better because we know if we have to call on somebody else, it's an hour away. Same thing with hazardous material response. We took over hazardous materials response from the, from the county, I think it was in 2011, if I remember right. They gave us some equipment. And then we had another business here in town, FSTI, that gave us, I think it was $75,000 to, to kind of help because they, they had a need when they, when they came into the city. And so we decided to take that on and we've done it ever since. And kind of what we've tried to do there, it's just like with the technical rescue, is we've tried to identify what our target hazards are, you know, what's most likely gonna happen if we do have a response here in the city, and let's try to mitigate those. And once again, I think we do a good job with, with identifying those and being able to mitigate those. Emergency management is another responsibility for the fire department. We made some pretty big steps this year with the city. We finally got everybody trained up to a basic level. And when I say the city, I say our, our leadership staff. And I really want to appreciate the, the effort that they put in because really, you know, that's, that's about a week's worth of training that everybody has to go to and put the rest of their other daily jobs aside. And that's a city manager on down. And we've really struggled to, to get that in years past, but everybody made the conscious effort this year to do it, and I really want to send out a big thank you to those and we'll keep moving forward there. Community risk reduction, it's another thing that we do, it's a big part of what we do now. And really, that's a, that's looking at our city as a kind of a bigger, a bigger picture and what are the biggest hazards we have in our city. And what we found is our, our young people are at risk and our older people are at risk. And so what Sylvia does, we talked about her earlier, is she, she goes out and identifies a lot of that stuff. With kids, we really try to educate them on fire safety and, you know, having a good plan to get out of your house, make sure your parents have a good plan to get out of your house if you have a fire. But with the older adults, it's fall hazards. Most of our calls are EMS calls, or a larger majority of them are falls with our, that are associated with our elderly. And so Sylvia goes, she does a ton of work with our elderly to try to identify, hey, why are we falling and how can we prevent that? So kudos to her, as most of you know, she got the fire education coordinator of the year last year, or fire educator of the year last year for the National Fire Protection. Huge honor, that's a national honor, and so couldn't be more proud of the work she does. We also have members on Texas Task Force One, which is an urban search and rescue team. It's honored to have that, but it also brings a lot of education back to us. We get to see a lot of different perspectives. Those teams are made up from departments throughout the state of Texas, and so obviously you're gonna get a lot of, of good feedback from that. And also, you guys have heard me talk more and more about TIFMS and how much we benefit from that. We're a huge partner with TIFMS and do a lot of deploying, not only to our state, but to California. We've been to California a couple of times and to Louisiana as well. So talking about community risk reduction, here's some of the key programs that, that we do. And I just, you know, when we first started this, we didn't give smoke alarms to our, our citizens. We didn't provide smoke alarms. And through a partnership with Red Cross over the last several years, we, we've got Red Cross to donate the smoke alarms and we'll go install them. So if people call us, we go out to their houses, we'll do a survey of their house, hey, this is how many you need. Would you like for us to put them in? They say yes. We get them from the Red Cross and then we go install them for free. And we follow up on that. Most of those are good. The ones that we give out now, the batteries, they're, they're long life batteries, so they're good for like 10 years. I think it's eight to 10 years is what they are now. And so we still have to test them, but they last a lot longer. But if they do go out, we go back out there and we'll take them down and put new ones up. So it's just, man, that's an, that's an easy thing to do, but it's so crucial that everybody has that at their house. We also have our Knox Box program. That's really targeted towards our elderly population. So a lot of times, we'll go to these, these houses and if somebody falls, they can't get to, an elderly person falls, they can't get to the door. If we see that two or three times, we, we identify, hey, there's a problem. And so instead of us having to call somebody that lives two hours away or break a window or break a door to get in their house, we have a program where we can, they can, we'll loan them this Knox Box. And what it is, it's a box where we can put a key to their house, a secure place to put a key to their house. And so when we go to that residence, we have a key that fits that. We're the only people that have that. It's secure. It has to be unlocked by code from us, so there's accountability. Same one we use in the businesses. And we can unlock their house and get in there without tearing anything up. And so it makes it a much better experience for both them and us. And so if there comes a time they don't need it anymore, then they just, they give it back to us and we use it further down the road. So it's been a great program in a partnership with Knox Box to, to provide that for our citizens. Community Connect, that's another program that we do, and it's targeting the elderly as well. Really, if they have a special need, if they're on oxygen, whatever their special need may be, they can get with us. We put that into our record management system. If we get a call to that particular residence, it pops up to our crews and tells us, hey, this residence, they have dogs in the back that may be a threat, or more importantly, this person is on oxygen. And we need to know that before we get there. Or if there's special needs, like if the kid, if it's a kid that's autistic, you know, we need to have that, that information, that'll let us know there. And all that comes up automatically on our, our records management system. The law school, that just ties into those, those elderly programs. Sylvia goes out there and provides the education and, and training. It really targets a lot of the falls again. And so that's what that program is. CPR classes, that's another need that, that we addressed several years ago. Everybody would call us asking, where can they do CPR? And we didn't have a good answer for them. So, you know, we decided, hey, let's start doing our own CPR classes and provide that for our community. And now we do it two or three times a month, and it goes out to just anybody that wants it. So, and different levels of CPR as well. So if anybody's ever interested in that, feel free to give us a call. We'd love to help you. Citizens Fire Academy, a lot of you I know have been in that, city managers have been in it, and it really is just gives everybody more in-depth view of what we do in the fire department. You know, sometimes it's kind of confusing on what we do. A lot of people may think we're just firefighters and we don't do all this other stuff. So if you're able to attend that, then it gives you a more complete picture of what we do. We're real excited about our new facility that we're, we're building. We're gonna be able to kind of drill down in that more and, and make it even more realistic like we've done in the past. So super excited about that. Fire extinguisher training, that's mostly aimed at our industry partners. So somebody like L3, if they want other people to be trained in fire, on fire extinguishers, we'll go out and provide that for them. Our accomplishments this year, two of the biggest things that we've got is the, the fire facility, the new training facility, Emergency Operations Center. That's pictured on the right. We're about a little over 50% done with that project. Hopefully in the fourth quarter is when we're gonna get done. We keep going back on when that, that's what I'm hoping. I'm hoping October is when we're in that building. That's what I keep telling the contractors as well, so. But nonetheless, the first of the year, we should be out there and, and training, and I can't wait to have an open house for everybody because it's just something, and I've said this to you guys last year, that's something I never thought that I would ever see in my career, and I can't say how appreciative I am that you guys let us do this. I mean, it's, it's gonna be something that's gonna be here a lot longer than I, I will, and I think it's a real benefit for the city. Like Chief talked about earlier, that public safety radio system, you know, both of those projects were started about the same time, and that's, that's something that's a long time coming as well. And it, it really is a project that it's not just a fire, for the fire department, it's not just for the police department, it's for the whole city. And we're all on that, that system. And just like the chief said, it's really robust. You know, if one tower goes down, the whole thing doesn't go down. You know, there's multiple redundancies there that we just didn't have in the past. And so it's also why it's so expensive to, to buy it and keep it up. But it's something that we really, really need and are very appreciative that y'all provided that for us. We placed truck three into service this year. That's on the bottom left. Y'all remember that was about a $1.7 million purchase. The life expectancy of that truck is about 15 to 20 years, so it'll be around, you know, longer than I will, but it is very expensive. And that's the one that's gonna, that has a four, four minimum staffing on it, four-person minimum staffing. And then we talked about it earlier, we added three new firefighter positions for that. So looking at our calls for service, just like with the police department... So, looking at our calls for service, um, just like with the police department, you can see that increase, uh, year over year. And a lot of ours too, will reflect the same thing that they saw. As we get more and more people here, our EMS calls are going to go up. And our motor vehicle accidents are going to go up. Because we respond to a lot of the same calls they do. And so, they're going to, for the most part, coincide with each other. If you'll look, the, the number of fires that we have year over year have declined steadily. And once again, I think a lot of that is to newer construction and also just having that, that push every year for fire education. I think one of the questions that we had, uh, in staff meeting when we went over this, what, what's the discrepancy that we have over, um, other calls going up? And so, what we did there, in the past, when we would have false alarms, especially on the fire column, we would leave those in there. It would come in as a fire alarm, we would count it as a fire call. But at the end of the day, it was nothing. So, we really, we kind of separated that out. Didn't feel like that was an accurate assessment. And we put those into other calls. So, if it's a confirmed false alarm now, it goes into all other calls. And so, this is just kind of a, this is going back to 2015, to give you an idea of where we were then to where we are now. I think in the, when we first started doing this in 2008, that was the first time I looked at this, we were just at, uh, 2,500 calls. So, from 2008, we've gone from 2,500 calls to today, 6,000. Expenditures, this is looking at our current budget year. Our budget's around $9.3 million. Just like with PD, most of that is personnel costs. This next year coming up, we, uh, we do have an increase of, from 9.3 million to 9.9 million, with a to- basically a total increase of $600,000. Uh, most of that comes from a proposed 5% pay increase and anticipated 10% health insurance increase, with about, um, 122 of that coming from just operational increase. Most of the operational increase is a result of inflation and also just the cost that we anticipate with the new training facility to operate that. And, and so, that's, that's really where that's at. But, um, really didn't add any new, any new programs in our, in our operations section. Any questions over that? Our capital requests for this year. Uh, we're asking for a multi-purpose utility vehicle. Honestly, it's a side-by-side with a, a stretcher or EMS component to it, uh, that will go out at Station Three. It also has a firefighting capability to it, where we can fight a, a small grass fire with it. And so, really, the biggest thing I, I see out of it is being used out at the sports park. And anytime we have a big, uh, a big tournament out there and we need to get to the, the ball fields, we're not driving fire trucks and ambulances way out to the, to the ball fields on the sidewalks and tearing up our infrastructure out there where we can accomplish the same thing with, uh, with that particular vehicle. I will say that, that particular vehicle, we're looking to pay for that with funds that we've acquired through TIFMS deployments. And so, um, uh, it would really, it would come out of the general fund, but it would be ours, you know, it would be money that we've already earned to do that, so. The intermodal container, this would go at our new training facility. We kind of, we identified a need out there to, to store our, our pallets that we would burn with, our, our hay that we would burn with. We don't really want to keep that in our support building. So, we would just buy a small intermodal container to, to keep those in out there. And that as well would be paid for with TIFMS funds. The next is six self-contained breathing apparatus. That's the picture you see on your right. That's just replacing some of the ones that we had. And we're trying to refurbish those. And also, we'll need a few out at the, the new facility for the, the instructors. The second or the last one you see there, or the next one you see there is a tractor with accessories for that training facility as well. The biggest thing, we've got two things out there. We'll need to mow the facility. We've got 12 acres. And so, this would help us, we would be responsible for mowing that with this particular tractor. And also, when we do vehicle extrications, we wanted to take those, those, those vehicles and be able to simulate, you know, real world, real world experiences. So, part of that would be putting them on their sides or putting them on the roof, uh, putting one on top of another one. And so, we needed, um, we needed something to do that. We first started looking at some of those SkyTrax. And those were really expensive. Um, and then we started thinking, hey, we've got to mow this place too. So, with this tractor, we'll have a front-end loader and we'll also have, uh, four attachments for it. And we can, we can move pallets around and move the cars around. So, it'd be, it'll, uh, it'll work good for that. That as well, we would take out of those TIFMS funds that we have. And so, the last one, our backup generators, we've been working on this project for a couple of years now. It started out, uh, we anticipated it 250,000 based on generators that we, we had just bought for other facilities. Then once we got some, some real-world quotes, uh, that thing is, it's kind of going crazy. We're still trying, we've, I think we've got one more vendor that we're trying to get that number back down a little bit. We just, I think some of us feel like that's a lot compared to what we've done in years past. So, you know, working with city manager and, and Chris with, with, uh, our, our in-house guys to see if we can get that back down. But right now, that's, that's what we're looking at. And until we find out something else, that's just the number we're going to go with. And outside of that, that's all I've got. Questions, budget, programs, anything?
I don't have any questions. It's more a comment. Uh, I just want to, I do want to thank you, Chief Powell and Chief Smith. I know he stepped out, but you guys, uh, always are willing to assist the school district, especially the Greenville ISD Police Department. There's times throughout the year that we need assistance. We're not that big of a department. So, I, again, I just do appreciate, uh, yourself, your department, your guys, and, and everyone at the Greenville Police Department. You are a big, big tremendous help to us, so appreciate it.
I appreciate it. It's always good to hear it. And I know, you know, I always feel that, well, that's what we're here for. You know, whether it's you guys, the hospital, you know, get a lot of that from the hospital because we work a lot with them. And when times get tough and, you know, I guess people, they thank you and they're surprised by it. And it's like, man, I don't want you to be surprised. I want you to expect that from us. So, uh, I can't say enough about the support that, that you guys give us. You know, since I've been here, the last 10 years have just been an incredible time for the Greenville Fire Department. It's because of the support you guys and our citizens give us. And so, that goes back to y'all. I mean, it, it really shows, it makes our job a lot easier. I hope we're making you guys proud, so.
You are. Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you all.
Okay. Anything else? This time, we'll convene to executive session. It is 4:51.
Act 604, if you'll please stand for the invocation Reverend Frank Stevenson is going to deliver.
For the God we come before you this day with the City Council meeting, we ask for decency and order to be taken place as we conduct city business. We thank you for your guidance. We ask you to touch ever heart and mind in Biden's soul in this place. We thank you for peace and understanding. For all of this in the love and send you to name and pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we have a presentation. It's the Police K-9 Awards. Chief Smith.
Thank you Mayor Protown, City Council members. The Greenville Police Department, we always strive to provide professional services to the citizens of our great city. And I want to take a moment to brag on our K-9 officers. This past April, they both attended the United States Police K-9 Association Region 20 Trials. Region 20 extends from 35 East through Louisiana up into Arkansas, parts of Oklahoma, all the way down to the Gulf. Officer Alex Beltetone and Ruben Vargas took their K-9 partners Tango and Cash to the trials and competed against 25 other dogs. I'm proud to say that Officer Beltetone and his K-9 partner finished top dog, first overall for Region 20. They were first in patrol work and fifth in K-9 narcotics detection. And Officer Vargas was right behind him at second in patrol and fourth in K-9 narcotics detection. So both of them have put in hours and hours of work. They love what they do and it shows. So they represented the city of Greenville and our primary department extremely well. And I would just want to take this opportunity to let y'all know how well they did.
Good job, good job.
Thanks Chief.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Let's go one at a time.
Trying to work.
Oh no. You need the truck?
Okay, thanks Chief. Let me call your attention to the citizens to be heard portion of the agenda. Citizens to be heard are invited to address the council on topics that are not already scheduled for a public hearing or listed on the agenda. Do we have any citizens to be heard?
We do. Amy Wooster, I hope I said that right. Wooster, I'm sorry.
Okay, Amy, you'll just state your name and address and then you'll have three minutes.
Amy Wooster, 2904 Poplar. I'm here for the Greenville Citizens Police Academy. You'll have to forgive me because I got called last night and asked to do this because the person who's supposed to be here got sick.
Me too.
I took, last year, actually previous year, I took the Citizens Fire Academy and then this past year I did the Citizens Police Academy. I loved both of them. Got to see the danger flows in person when they weren't quite so, but they got to see how they hire, how they train, all their different trainings, the different divisions, the dispatch, and oh my gosh, the dispatch does so much and you don't ever really think about it. You're like, okay, you go here. No, there's a lot more to that. We got to see the entire place. We were supposed to go to the gun range, but Hammy decided to get injured and lose their season. But my husband wants to do it this year, so I'm going to go back and do it again. I had lots of fun, met some really great officers. A lot of respect for these guys and gals and I would just love to encourage more people to go do it. I think they have another class coming up starting late August, early September.
Great.
That's what I would like to say.
Thank you so much for your input, Amy. Appreciate that. Is there any others? Okay. Okay, thank you. So, public testimony? Okay, well, public testimony occurs when citizens are invited to address the council on topics that are already on the agenda. So that starts tonight with Resolution 8A. We do not have any ordinances, so we'll move right to Resolution 8A, which is consideration in action on a resolution authorizing a change order with AMP Golf States related to the Sports Park Center and the Reese Davis Expansion Projects. Brett Quarles.
Yeah, Mayor Protown, Council, thank you. Good evening. So this will be change order number six in the amount of 26,879.78. And so what this will be covering is some things like at Reese, had a clay trap replacement, some drainage at the sports park for the skate park. And then adjusted some of the architectural drawings from welding the roof deck on to mechanically fastening the roof deck. And then at Reese, one thing we kind of overlooked in the remodel process was the existing wooden backboards on the sides, going ahead and replacing those and updating them to acrylic as well to match the new gem. So be happy, more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay, anybody want to speak in favor or opposition? Okay, what do you guys want to do?
Make a motion to approve.
Seven.
All right, please vote. It passes 5-0. All right, next is consideration in action on a resolution authorizing an additional services amendment to the professional services agreement with Geotex Engineering.
Yes, sir. So what this will be is just extending the current contract with the Sports Park Center. We added, there was some added peers under the pool per the architects and engineers. And so that was some added costs to Geotex, as well as some of the pump track. We added a skate park to that as well. And so this would finish out that project and be able to finish out the sports park as a whole. So.
Questions? Okay, anyone here to speak in favor, opposition? All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote. It passes 5-0. All right, consideration in action on a resolution authorizing the release of drainage, retainage in the amount of 40,647.50 to Transcend Incorporated.
Yes, sir. So this is concerning the pump track skate park project. So SPA has completed their portion of the project, as you can see in the images above. And so this would be releasing that retainage. We've looked at it, inspected it and are good with it. We're still working out some warranty issues since it won't be open for a year. So what we're working on them to do is extend the warranty for another year once it opens. And so we're talking through some of that with them. But there's still some things we have to do there. Add turf in there in the drainage areas where you can see kind of the dirt in the middle. And then do some work side amenities around it, some picnic tables, that type of stuff. But their part of the project is complete. So this would be releasing that money to them to finish them out.
Okay, great. Thank you. Questions? Anyone like to speak in favor or opposition? All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Seven.
Please vote. It passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, consideration and possible action on a resolution authorizing MH Civil to extend the bore under Highway 69 at the Sabine River Bridge for an additional 30 feet in order to clear the creek. Bob Burney.
Good evening, Council. I'm here tonight pretty much to ask you if we can consider this action authorizing the MH Civil to extend that bore. Problem is, if you can see in the picture, is where that marker stick is, is where the bore is going to come out right in the middle of the creek. Now, this project started a year ago and the creek has washed out a little bit. But what our main problem was, is as they were born, we found Cash's water line. We had to actually change our angle of the bore and to get underneath the line a little bit more and it shortened us up here. So we need to add 30 feet to get out of the creek to be able to tie into the drain valve that's actually going to go there. And that's pretty much what it is. It's a, it's a change order that we're going to add 50, I think it's 58,000 or 54,000 to do this 30 feet at $1,800 linear foot.
Is that line below Cash's line?
I'm sorry.
Is that line below Cash's line?
We are now below Cash's water line, yeah. There's, it's, it's one of those spots and one of those areas that everybody has just everything crammed into. And we just decided to go underneath everybody just to, that way we don't hit nobody's water line or anything like that, have to come out of pocket for it. So, and like I said, this puts us back on track to get us past this creek and get the actual drain valve put in so they can keep going.
Questions? Anybody like to speak in favor or opposition? All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote. Passes 5-0.
Thank you.
All right, consideration in action on a resolution approving a project reimbursement request for stain back organization for TERS 1.
Yeah, thank you TJ. What this is, if you guys will remember, the council and the TERS board entered into a TERS and a Chapter 380 agreement back in July of 2024 for their 110 acre tract of land. And if you'll remember, the first part of that piece was that they had to dedicate 9.3 acres to the Cinemark property, which in your packet is that deed that has been filed at Hunt County. So they have dedicated that land to the Cinemark. Once they did that, obviously, if you'll remember this, Abbotwich Drive was very important to the Cinemark development because if you'll remember, they wanted a clause in that contract that stated if the developer did not develop that road, that Cinemark would want to develop that road. They have developed that road. You'll see some pictures here. This is looking to the east, which you'll see Panera that direction. The one on the right is looking towards the west there. If you'll go to the next one, then these are just further, that other one is looking towards, you'll see the ER towards Monty Stratton on that direction. So the road is probably 90 to 95% complete. We're working, Steve Glass is working with them on finishing up the street lighting. That's why it's not open yet. But to, to fund this road, we agreed for TERS and any other available revenues that the city had. So we had a TERS board meeting this morning at 11 o'clock here in the council chamber. They agreed with the remaining funds that we have left in the TERS to fund 700,000 of this road, which overall costs a little over 4.9 million. So in total, you guys and the 380 agreed to 4.5 million for this specific road. And so they have spent that. I've audited those financial records. So the remainder of this, which is why it's coming to you guys, the city council, will be coming out of impact fees, which is going to be under roadway impact zone number three. And then the water and wastewater impact fees, which you saw in Steve's presentation, which there was funding in all three of those to, to be able to pay out this 1.8 million dollars for what it was intended for, which is roadway and water and sewer. So everything's moving forward. There's just those few punchless items to be done on this road. And then once we get those streetlights in, it'll be open, you know, once it's turned over to the city and the engineers deem it as being okay to be opened, then we'll move forward and Cinemark has broke ground. So they're, they're happy with the road. It's a four lane road going all the way from Monty Stratton to Sale. So that's going to be the main entrance for everything on the backside of that property for that. So it does connect. I think if you'll go one more, Geraldine, I don't know that I put it in this presentation, but it does connect, no, sorry, I didn't. But there, it does connect up to the road that goes next to Texas Roadhouse. So it does connect to that as well. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Everything passed okay with the TERS board this morning and everything's moving forward. So I'll have, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Anybody like to speak in favor or opposition? All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote. It passes 5-0. I would ask the city secretary to read the consent calendar.
City council meeting minutes from May 13th in consideration in action on a resolution authorizing the purchase of a single Turner valve maintenance skid from Wach's Utility Products.
Thank you. Questions? What's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote. All right, next up is city staff reports, monthly status reports, summer spurlock.
Thank you TJ. This will be for the month of April. So contractor utility cuts were up from 12 to 19. Pothole repairs went from 205 to 75. Street sweeping miles were up to 248. Just remind you, downtown is swept on a weekly basis. They were able to mow, obviously the grass is growing, so 100% to all the areas that they typically mow for that 30 day period. Line of sight, they cleared 18 intersections. They replaced 38 signs, which was down from 79. Building permits issued were up from 18 to 23. And then COs that were issued were up from 28 to 33. And then traffic citations were up from 418 to 469. So that, you'll see that's that traffic unit that's not yet fully staffed. So I think that number will continue. And then the raw water line, so this really hasn't changed much since the last month. They're still moving forward. I think we're still pretty close to two miles from being, one and a half, okay, we're one and a half miles from being installed into the ground from the, the pump station. The Tawakani header pump project is under construction. I think all the concrete is poured currently. Yeah, and if you would like to see pictures, they're moving pretty quickly on that. It's impressive what they're doing, but they're, all the concrete's poured there. So now they're just laying all the headers in there and moving forward. So that project, with the exception of that one change order, is still moving forward from that. We do have a, a meeting with the MH shovel, the contractors to finish out. Thank you TJ. This will be for the month of April. So contractor utility cuts were up from 12 to 19. Pothole repairs went from 205 to 75. Street sweeping miles were up to 248. Just remind you, downtown is swept on a weekly basis. They were able to mow, obviously the grass is growing, so 100% to all the areas that they typically mow for that 30 day period. Line of sight, they cleared 18 intersections. They replaced 38 signs, which was down from 79. Building permits issued were up from 18 to 23. And then COs that were issued were up from 28 to 33. And then traffic citations were up from 418 to 469. So that, you'll see that's that traffic unit that's not yet fully staffed. So I think that number will continue. And then the raw water line, so this really hasn't changed much since the last month. They're still moving forward. I think we're still pretty close to two miles from being, one and a half, okay, we're one and a half miles from being installed into the ground. From the, the pump station, the Tewahnee header pump project is under construction. I think all the concrete is poured currently. Yeah, and if you would like to see pictures, they're moving pretty quickly on that. It's, it's impressive what they're doing, but they're, all the concrete's poured there, so now they're just laying all the headers in there and, and moving forward. So that project, with the exception of that one change order, is still moving forward from that. We do have a, a meeting with the MH Civil, the contractors, to finish out that additional pipe that you guys approved the purchase of. So we're going to talk with them about doing that. So that might possibly be another change order coming before you. But other than that, everything else is moving forward. There's a little bit of, from this project pipe left to be purchased, but not much. So we're kind of closing the actual purchasing of the pipe out. And then, and then the proposed mill and overlay that you guys, that the council, City Council Transportation Subcommittee made the above recommendation, we'll look to bring that to you guys at the June meeting so that we can move forward with that contract. And the streets listed there are the ones that we decided to put in that mill and overlay project at a cost of 486,000. So you'll see that one coming before you in June. And then I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, no questions. Thank you, Summer. And then we will postpone financial reports till the next meeting. So any city council discussion, proposed agenda items? There's none. You have the board and commission minutes before you. We do not need to go to executive session, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.